Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for May 28, 2024. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then I have an invocation for this evening. As we gather this evening, we are mindful of the trust given us to bring forth opportunities to our residents, businesses, and visitors to our great community. We keep in mind our duty to work in an open, honest, impartial way to ensure fair representation as your city council. We are grateful for the trust given each of us to work together as we build on the efforts of those who have come before us to ensure a prosperous future for our community. Thank you for your opportunity of service.
Mr. Skolik, could we please have the roll call?
Yeah, Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, we have some presentations this evening, so if everyone could join me down below, that'd be great. I oftentimes say one of the best parts of our job is recognizing our youth in the city, so we actually have some awesome kids here this evening from the Thunder Stallion team. Ryan Ponsford is the head coach and the rest of the team. So if you want to come up all at once, that'd be great, or you could just come up one by one, but I think it's better if everyone's up here. And then I'm going to read a little something to talk about what you guys did. So, the San Marcos Thunder Stallion baseball team was first assembled as part of the San Marcos Youth Baseball Organization in the spring of 2018. The team has been playing together in both spring and fall seasons for six years. Wow, that's pretty incredible. You guys have been doing it a long time. The Thunder philosophy is to develop excellent baseball players and being league and community leaders. The players get back to the community by providing skills clinics for younger players and acting as youth umpires for the league. San Marcos Thunder compete at the highest levels of 12U. That means you've been playing together since you were six?
Yeah.
Wow, so you're all like that, okay. Anyway, they're earning highly competitive tournament spots throughout California, Arizona, and also multiple trips in spring training to Peona, Arizona. Over the last three seasons, the team have won over eighty-five games and been finalists or champions in over fifteen tournaments. Wow. The summer, the team represented San Marcos, competing against seventy of the top teams in the country at a week-long tournament at the All-Star Village in Cooperstown, New York. So, if I could have Ryan, we have three coaches here, Ryan Ponsford, James Gumpel, and Jay Arnold. If you guys could come up, I would like to present you with these. The San Marcos City Council does hereby present you with an honorable certificate of recognition for an impressive season with the San Marcos Thunder Stallion baseball team. The coaches and the team have brought considerable recognition to themselves, the San Marcos Youth Baseball Organization, and their community for their dedication, camaraderie, and sportsmanship. Which, by the way, kids, the most important thing is being a good sportsman because if you're winning and you're not being nice to other players, that's not a good thing. Anyway, the city council of the city of San Marcos proudly congratulates you on your successful season and wish you luck in the tournament in Cooperstown this summer. So, Ryan?
Yes.
Is that you?
Thank you.
James? Of course, James. And then, James, only because I know him, that's why I said that. Not because, of course, he's James. Anyway, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things.
Okay, and then I'm going to call the kids up one by one.
Perfect, thank you, appreciate it. Well, first of all, I want to thank the city council. We're part of a youth rec league here in San Marcos without which we wouldn't exist. So, if you guys know baseball, there's great giant travel programs that are out there. We compete with all of them by all volunteers and kids that have come out to compete since they were little. And these kids have proven, not only their on-the-field skills, winning countless championships, but what we really strive for is what they do off the field. And we actually just recently had them all submit their grades, and we collectively have over 3.5 collective team GPA, which is pretty dang impressive. So, we collect grades with them, we make them, they volunteer all over the county. They are multiple youth umpires and do really amazing things throughout the city. And we're so proud of them and the young men they're becoming. And so, we thank you guys for the opportunity to continue to compete here in the city. We have a beautiful facility. I think it's one of the greatest gems in all of San Marcos. And that San Marcos Sports Center is truly amazing, so that's, we really appreciate all that you guys do. And congratulations to you guys. And we're excited to go represent San Marcos in Cooperstown, New York. We'll represent proudly and have a lot of fun on your behalf and hopefully come back with some extra trophies. This, by the way, was this last weekend. We just won a three-day tournament over Memorial Weekend.
Oh, look at that.
Huge tournament up in Temecula.
The swag.
And we got some well-brought-out bling to show you guys, so.
Very cool.
Thank you very much, Mayor, appreciate it.
Wait, oh, you have them all on, okay. So, when it's time for the picture, you guys have to have those all out, your hands out, that's super cool. All right, I'm going to have you come on down. So, Salvador, was it Aravalo?
Yes, sir.
Okay, come on down. Congratulations. Okay, Colton Arnold. A.J. Carapia? Did I see it wrong? Carapia, my apologies. You know what, we do this sometimes, you know, we're not perfect, but my heart's in it. Braden Gonzalez. I have to tell you, when I'm shaking their hands, I can feel the rings. They're really heavy, right? Oh, my goodness. Camden Gonzalez. They're very swaggy. Braden Gumpel. Jacob Johns. Luke Kirschbaum. Bronson McKay. Weston Ponsford. Owen Pop. Everin Schmidt. Okay, now the time for us all to figure out how we're going to take a picture with you all. And I do have to say, like, half of your life you've been playing together, you guys must be really close. Yeah? That's very cool. Anyway, let's take a picture. Oh, yeah, let's not forget the parents because my daughter played competitive soccer, I have to tell you. You guys are dedicated, and I know how hard it is. We appreciate you really investing in them because this really is an investment, taking them to all the tournaments, spending all the time there, your weekends, all of your free time. And so, I hope you guys are very appreciative of your parents because it is tough, but you guys are doing the hard work. So, anyway, congratulations.
Should we go to them?
Yeah. When we go to them? We're going to go to them? Okay. We'll do that.
Thank you, appreciate you guys, yep. Thank you, thank you, appreciate you, thank you very much, appreciate you. Thank you, appreciate you, thank you. Just keep smiling for the winner, guys. We're still raising money if anybody wants to make a donation to Cooperstown.
Why don't you go and buy it?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's really cool. Congratulations.
Thank you. We will, can we?
Okay, all right, we'll fight you back. Thank you.
We'll come back with some bling, right?
Yeah, bring that bling. All right, as living in San Diego County nearly all of my life, I still have a hard time calling it the San Diego County Fair. I want to call it the Del Mar Fair. But tonight, we're recognizing the San Diego County Fair. It's coming up. So, we do have someone, Melinda Carmichael, the Chief Administration Officer. Come on down. Tell us about all the fun new things that are happening this year. But I'm going to read this because it's just a bit of a read, but anyway, really excited that you're here today. But I really do have a hard time calling it the San Diego County Fair.
It's been called many things over the years.
It's the Del Mar Fair, always in my heart. Okay, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes the San Diego County Fair. Whereas, the San Diego County Fair first held in 1980, see, I was a kid then, it has evolved over the years, continuing to serve as a gathering place for all San Diego County residents, including San Marcos residents, to enjoy fun, dancing, music, rides, games, live entertainment, and educational experiences. The fair offers valuable opportunities for San Marcos small businesses, farmers, landscapers, gardeners, artists, crafters, woodworkers, photographers, collectors, and others to showcase their talents and products, promoting community engagement and economic development. Numerous groups from San Marcos, such as Dance FX, Pacific Motion Dance Center, San Diego Hula Academy, and Silverhawk Stompers participate in the fair as entertainers and performers, contributing to a rich cultural experience. San Marcos residents benefit from the fair tripper, a combination ticket for the fair and NCTD, along with the free shuttle service from Solana Beach Station, ensuring convenient access without traffic concerns. The 2024 San Diego County Fair runs from June 12th to July 7th, excluding Mondays and Tuesdays. And the 2024 theme is "Let's Go Retro", celebrates the 1950s through the 1990s, that's a little bit for everyone, I'd say, a period during which San Marcos grew into the vibrant community it is today. We, the city council of the city of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim June 12th as San Diego County Fair Day in the city of San Marcos, recognizing the fair's longstanding significance to our diverse communities and its cherished connection to San Marcos. So, thank you very much for all you do, and if you'd like to, anything I didn't cover, you feel free. Congratulations, really excited.
We have some goodies for you.
Okay, I'm going to get that.
Put this down.
Okay.
But we, thank you, Mayor Jones. We are very honored to receive this proclamation and very excited to be here tonight. There's a lot of community engagement that comes from the city of San Marcos. We have exhibit entries, we have staff that live in the community, we have vendors that work with us at this year's fair, including Hot Dog on a Stick, Angelo's Comics, as well as Shelf Genie. And so, with that said, she stole some of my thunder. But we are open officially on June 12th and running through that fair. But now that we're officially past Memorial Day, there's a few things that we have to keep in mind. One, you can officially wear white now. Two, kids are almost out of school, and she's got white on. And then, three, the largest community bash will be happening, Del Mar Fairgrounds, San Diego County Fair, whichever you want to call it, we would love to have you all there to celebrate and get together and enjoy all of our offerings, which are vast. So, thank you so much. We are very excited, appreciate this.
Okay, let's take a quick picture so we can memorialize this. And I'll just kind of hold this up so we can have this as our prop.
One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Of course. Is this for me? Just a few little goodies.
Thank you.
Okay, is that a presentation?
Good evening. We'd like to take the opportunity from the Fire Department to present to you a new county program that will help streamline notifications for evacuations and repopulation for the entire county. All jurisdictions are going to be taking part, and I'm going to turn this over to my team, who are the experts in this category. We have our Operations Chief, Bill Frederick, and our Emergency Manager, Jamie Smith.
Thank you, Chief. So, what's really important about this major movement for public safety in our region is that it was an extremely collaborative effort. Fires don't know boundaries and nor does coordination or collaboration. So, alongside the Fire Chiefs Association, our LE partners, including Sheriff here today, the Unified Disaster Council, and even in our communities such as Cal State San Marcos Emergency Manager, Jennifer here in the back, we all came together to try and create a best practice to help save lives and to do evacuation better. No better time to talk about this than the ten-year anniversary of COCOs, so we're really excited to show you this new tool. You may be familiar, we've done a ton of campaigns regarding Alert San Diego. Alert San Diego is the county system where you can opt in to be alerted if your area is being evacuated or if there is a warning. What that means is you go onto the website, alertsanddiego.org, and you actually register your phone number, the address that you would like to be notified about. Maybe that's a business, or a relative, or yourself. And that system will then, when you're impacted, it can give you a voice call, it can text you, and it can email you in the format that you have preferred. So, for anyone with access and functional needs that needs special consideration with any of those modalities, you can indicate that on the website, as well as a multitude of languages. The Wireless Emergency Alerts, or WIA, as you may have heard of them, are those alerts that kind of sound like an Amber Alert, they pop up on your phone, and those are relative to cellphone towers. And what that means is if you enter an area where there has been an evacuation or there is a disaster and your cellphone connects with that tower, it will give you the information needed to keep you safe. So, that's important for if you're visiting somewhere and you aren't registered perhaps on Alert San Diego, but San Diego has a lot of tourism, including in San Marcos, that we want to keep everybody safe. So, that would be the automatic notification on cellphones in a disaster area. Again, this is what that looks like. The issue with WIA is that you're really limited on the number of characters that you can put into these automatic systems. So, whereas, you know, instructing people where to go, where the shelter is, et cetera, most often times, there are links for you to click to go somewhere else to get the most current information. So, Alert San Diego, again, that is location-based that you have registered for. And this new product is very exciting. It's called Genesis Protect. So, what happens is you go and you download the app from Genesis Protect, and you register for the zone that you live in. I'm just using it as an example for a residence, but it could be a business or maybe your grandma's house. And when that zone, in the field, like Chief Frederick is going to talk about, is changed to an evacuation, an advisory, a warning, things of that nature, you will get an automatic pop-up on your phone giving you bountiful information. So, here is the QR code to download that app. We also have flyers in both English and Spanish in the back of where to get the application. And Chief Frederick's going to give us a little bit of insight into the in-the-field piece of this new application.
Thank you, Jamie. So, as members of the Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department are at the scene of an emergency, it's a coordinated effort between both agencies. And based on the emergency location and the information we're trying to communicate to the public of if we want to put an area into an order or a warning based on the size and magnitude of the incident, there'll be a selection made, and as you can see on the map here, the top section of the 004 zone, that area will be put into order and the other in a warning, and then that information is sent out, it'll immediately come to the application. When you receive the alert, you can see here on the left, it's going to talk about an evacuation order, which states that it's an immediate threat to life and you leave now versus a warning as you have up to two hours. This is a tool that we can use to send out six different types of notification between an advisory or normal status. The great part about this system, we can also use it in reverse to work for repopulation in the event you're evacuated from the area. We can also let you know when it's opened up to come back in, where we didn't have that tool before. So, we're really excited about this.
Additional resources we have for evacuations or information during disasters in the county are, again, alertsanddiego.org. That's actually a website that you can get emergency information throughout the county, wherever it's happening, as well as the SD Emergency App. Now, the SD Emergency App will, again, alert you with anything that's happening anywhere in the county versus the Protect App, which will be very pertinent to where you're standing or where you've subscribed. The following are social media. We've always put safety messages out on our social medias. Right here, you can see what the SD Emergency App looks like, and you'll see what makes that unique is the recovery piece. So, after the disaster, you'll find recovery information, where do you go, maybe phone numbers to talk to, or programs to be a part of. So, again, we want you to be the most prepared, especially coming into fire season, and get the Protect App, Genesis Protect, which is one of those QR codes on the top. That's going to be the zone-based. And then, we also would like you to get the information-based county-wide SD Emergency App. Again, here is the QR code, and it's as simple as finding your zone, clicking Save Location, and there you go. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So, I went and signed up today, and so I have an elderly mother that lives in East County. She wouldn't like me calling her that, by the way, but she is. And so, I can actually add her address in, and then it will alert me when there's a situation in her neck of the woods, which she's out in East County, so it, like, if she needs to evacuate, she could definitely evacuate to me. So, and then also, if you have a business, you can, so is there any limit to how many areas you could actually sign up for?
I believe right now, the subscription piece of it is five locations.
Okay.
But that could, the app keeps getting better and better, so it could be more. But again, that piece of the geolocator of where you're also standing is super important.
Yeah, so you could check on your family members too, and so you could have like a communal spot where everyone could go if they're not affected by an emergency. Well, I think it's a great thing. I'm glad we're doing this, and I'm, and thank you for bringing it forward. I actually already am on the San Diego Alert system, which, because the last time when the fire did come in 2014, it was actually in my yard. So, but I think at the time, and we had a different council then, I think four of the five council members were actually evacuated. So, it was a really tough time for all of us, and it's good now that we're going to have just another tool that's even more accurate that will help us get through that. So, anyway, any other discussion from the council? Nope? Seeing none, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, we have nine items. Do we have any items that any council members wish to pull? If not, I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to oral communications. We have several speakers. We will be starting with Angelica Santiago, followed by Simon Guzman, and then Benjamin Barlow, in that order. First speaker, Angelica. Hello. Now, if you notice, I do that every single time. I forget to move it back. My apologies.
No worries, and I'm pretty short, too. Hi, good afternoon. Angelica Santiago, I'm a community educator with Universidad Popular. We actually have our office here in San Marcos. So, thank you all, councilmembers, mayor. So, first of all, I wanted to say thank you. I don't think Sylvia is here, but I did want to thank her and the city of San Marcos, the staff, you know, all of you, and Hillary from Legal Aid Society of San Diego for the workshop in Spanish last Monday, May 20th, about tenants' rights. It's actually a workshop that our committee members requested, and it was made possible. it was made possible. So we had around 35 or so community members engaged and eager to learn more after this workshop. I think we took the whole period, they shut it down, we had to leave, and packed out really fast. In addition, I did want to thank my Universidad team, we're a very small but mighty team, especially our community educators and our volunteers for conducting outreach out in the field here in San Marcos. So they were able to distribute 600 flyers provided from the city of San Marcos. They did door-to-door canvassing, which they focus on as a trusted messenger, having these conversations. Our volunteers did reminder calls, social media posts, and we just shared the work with our fellow members and also residents from Villa Serena. And Universidad Popular was able to support with tech, support with the microphones. They took amazing pictures, hopefully we'll see them soon, and provided refreshments. And then I think, once again, I think this was an amazing event, and I, we at Universidad Popular are looking forward for future events and for this collaboration. So thank you all, and definitely looking forward to more of these opportunities for our community members. So that was one thing. So another thing, it was amazing to hear the work that our department, our Fire Department is doing in regards to emergency preparedness. So actually, my role with Universidad Popular as a trusted messenger is to get this information out to our community members. So I, we are, we went through the Alert and Prepare Listos Program. We're a Listos California grantees, and we actually conducted our CERT training with the Escondido and San Marcos Fire Department last year. So our goal is to, as we saw, right, be prepared, the antes, durante, y después, in our communities, especially our Spanish-making communities. So we do a lot of door-to-door canvassing, having these conversations, after-school outreach at San Marcos Elementary, Juliant, I'm like forgetting the other schools, but many other schools. We have community events. We participate in workshops, I'm going, like, in conferences at Casa de San Marcos, to get this information out. So I think maybe just something to keep in mind, I'm not sure if the presenters were here, but just something to keep in mind is really our communities, especially, you know, the digital divide. These apps are amazing, but we want to make sure that all of our community members are able to use them. I know if I provide this information to my parents, that's going to be very, very difficult. And we're not always there for them, right? And also, I always get this question from our community members that live in multi-unit homes and apartments, like, what is the best way for them to get that aid, especially if they're in the fourth or third building? So maybe having these conversations, you know, in the future, in the near future, because they're very, very needed. So I just wanted to share our work. I saw this on the agenda, so I think it was a great opportunity to continue these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Simon Guzman, followed by Benjamin Barlow, and then Reem Tabar will be after that. Simon, welcome, Simon.
Hi, good evening. Buenos dias. My name is Simon Guzman. I use pronouns such as he, him, and el. I am an alumni from Cal State San Marcos, studied political science and women's studies, and I lived here in San Marcos for about three years. I'm here today as a community member and somebody who also just has relationships with people here in this amazing city, in support of the students and community members here tonight, who are part of the Students for Justice in Palestine at Cal State San Marcos, and who are supporting the movement globally right now that's calling for a ceasefire. And truthfully, I wasn't expecting to speak tonight, but the reason I decided to do so is because I look up at you all and you are elected officials, and I understand, from knowing a little bit about city councils here and there, and how our government works, that you all are elected to represent so many people. And I think you have a hard job to do that, especially in today's climate and environment. Many of us can't afford to live here anymore. But I bring this because you all also are supported by staff members, people who you assign to keep the peace as well. And if you notice, it's incredible to see so many young people here today that are in this chamber, speaking to you this evening. And so I wanted to make sure to speak to you all directly, because you have such an incredible role to ensuring that they're able to continuously come here and voice what they want, and that you all listen to them, because that's what you're elected to do, to listen to your constituents, to listen to community members, and ensure that as much as possible, you protect their right to speech to be able to do that. I'm also coming here today because I have loved ones who are Palestinian, who are Arab-Americans, and who have lived here in this community. And as somebody who knows that unfortunately we can experience a lot of racism here in our own community, I'm very well aware that unfortunately, a lot of these attitudes and ideas that some people are better than others are prevalent, and they're prevalent globally as well. And that's exactly why I feel passionate about coming to talk to you all about Palestine today, because I know I have loved ones who have, family members who've been displaced because of the ongoing bombings that have been happening in Gaza and in Palestine for many, many years. And even just today, we understand that Israel has expanded its military operations to Rafa, which is the very southern Gaza Strip, which is majority made up of families who have been displaced because of Israel's occupation and bombing against innocent Palestinian civilians. And just today, that's May 28th, at 2:15 PM, we know that Israel has killed at least 36,096 people, including more than 15,000 children that have been killed, over 8,000 people that have been injured, and more than 10,000 people who have been missing. And I know that your jobs are difficult. I get that. I also know you all have families, you just woke them, a whole bunch of young people to come here. And I know that you, as people who have individuals that you love, you must be moved in one way or another by what's happening. And a lot of times, people say, what happens in another part of the world doesn't affect us here. But I actually am here to implore you to make sure that your position is clear, because a lot of these things are interconnected. And people look to you to show positive leadership in this moment. So I hope that as you listen to these students and what the different community members are asking you to do, whether it's support a resolution for a ceasefire, or looking at disclosing and divesting from anything that can perpetuate this amount of killing, that you take the responsibility that you signed up for, and know that this is also in your hands. And the message that you send to people here and our community adds up. We need leadership in North County right now. People care about this. It's not going to go away. You have a chance to be bold and to show leadership and do the right thing, so I hope you all are able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Next up will be Benjamin Barlow, followed by Reem Tabar, followed by Patrick Hartley. Benjamin Barlow, welcome.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Jones, City Council, thank you for taking a few minutes. I have the pleasure of serving on the Budget Review Committee. I think you probably heard from a few of my colleagues over the last few meetings, but I'm here as well to also reiterate our support for the tax revenue measure, and hoping that you will support that measure in getting it on the ballot. Moved to San Marcos about five years ago, my wife and I, with our three small children, and we are very, very invested in this community, and have been, and hope to be so for the distant future. But I have some real concerns about the fiscal stability of the city in the coming years, as I'm sure all of you do as well. And I think the tax revenue measure is something that has to be prioritized, and it has to be supported, so that this city can continue to look at expanding services, not cutting services, public safety services, things that are so important. We really should be looking at expanding those services to people in this community. And without this measure, without that tax revenue, or the ability for the voters to get educated about how this tax revenue can really help expand services, or keep the valuable services that we all enjoy so much in this city, we're not going to be able to continue to have the city that we love so much, or the city that we want this to be. So please support the tax measure, getting it on the ballot, so our voters can make a decision on that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Benjamin. Next up is Reem Tabar, followed by Patrick Hartley, and then Frank Petrellia. Welcome, Reem.
Thanks for having me and allowing me to speak today, and thank you all for your service to our city. So I'm here today to mirror the earlier speaker here, and everyone here who's wearing a kaffiyah today. So I'm a, here as an American Palestinian, raised Christian with a Jewish grandmother. So you can imagine how confused I am about everything. I think you know why we're all here, though. We're here to ask that you help Israelis and Palestinians achieve an everlasting peace. There are ways for you to do this, along with all the other cities. And some cities have already taken these efforts, though. One, we're calling for a permanent and immediate bilateral ceasefire in Gaza and Rafa. Two, we're calling for a statement, or I'm calling for a statement, calling for the divestment from any companies supporting countries that engaged in war crimes or human rights violations. Again, other cities have already done this, and it would be nice to be on the right side of history. It would be honorable for San Marcos to take a step forward, especially as one of the first North County cities to do this. And three is to pass a comprehensive resolution that restricts how our city can invest in companies involved in arms manufacturing, border surveillance, mass incarceration and detention. I would like to see these resolutions placed on the next city council meeting agenda, because it's simply time for humankind to evolve.
Thank you, Reem. Next up will be Patrick Hartley, followed by Frank Petrellia, and then Dee, oh, sorry, I can't read Dee's last name. Is it? I don't know. Dror? Dror? My apologies, Dee. So Patrick's up next. Patrick Hartley? Welcome, Patrick.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I come here in the name of ending violence and in the hopes that there can be common sense and an effort to, towards peace. Inevitably, I've been to a few meetings before, not this one, but other, I live in Oceanside, actually, but I wanted to come to support some friends that I met through different events. And inevitably, people are going to say, you know, they're going to bring up October 7th. Do you condemn Hamas? You know, that's, let's get to the point. That's what you guys will wonder. But if you, if you, I'll just ask you one question. Do you condemn all violence? Because if you condemn all violence, that's a serious question, like, that you would actually have to think about. Do I condemn all violence? So just take a second. Because if you condemn all violence, you have to look at the root of all violence, and the root of this event that happened that caused this six months of just annihilation of an entire population. The root of the violence is 76 years ago, in 1948, Israel was given a state by the UN, given the right to create a state. And what did they do? Did they say, hey, let's all come together and create a state? No. They exterminated, like, 17,000 Palestinians. And the rest of them that were in these villages, 700,000, they said, you have an hour or a few hours to leave, we're going to come back and kill you. That's just, I know that's, like, heavy, but that's the context here. 70 years later, we, you know, America, you know, is, you know, they're, America's a democracy, right? And supposedly, Israel is a democracy, this beacon of hope, but are they really a democracy? If you're a Palestinian, you're dehumanized, you're marginalized, you're, you have no, you can't vote, you can't even own your own home, if that your family has had for ancestors, they can just make a law and kick you out. And you have zero, like, access to job, or food, or water. It's dehumanizing, it's marginalizing, segregation, like, you can't walk down the same street as a person from Israel. So they've basically been trying to be erased. And there's no justification for violence. There's no justification for killing civilians. That's atrocious. The only thing I can say is, like, how can you not expect some kind of backlash from 70 years of dehumanization and violence against someone? So we're just trying to, I know it's a symbolic thing to ask for a ceasefire resolution. It's very, it's just performative. However, it sends a signal to other leaders higher up that you are, you have a heart, that you have a humane heart. Like, you have to ask yourself, why, why would, you know, after this atrocious thing happened, Israel said there was 40 beheaded babies. Where's the, but there was zero proof of this. It's been debunked for, for, you know, months. Why would they even need to do that? There were already, you know, atrocities that were committed. Why would they even need to, to create this lie? So they could dehumanize to justify this genocide. There are probably going to be people here, Israeli or, that will say that they, that there's justification for, they'll try anything they can to justify this genocide, to distract from what Israel is doing. They're committing a genocide. However you want to call it, a conflict, a war, thousands of, 300 people are being killed a day.
Thank you, Patrick. Next speaker is Frank Petrellia, followed by Dee Dror, and then... Thank you, Frank. If we could please not clap when we have a speaker that's, or when I'm speaking, or when we have a speaker when our times are up, that would be great. We're going to have mutual respect this evening.
Hi. It's very difficult to follow that. Good evening. My name is Frank Petrellia. I represent the Capelina Mobile Home Owners Association in El Dorado Mobile Home Park at 1515 Capelina Road in San Marcos. This is the third time I've been addressing this council concerning the El Dorado Regulatory Agreement and Long-Term Lease Accord. The first time I spoke before the city council on this topic was on May 10th, 2022. There have been meetings and countless emails I and other HOA representatives have had with the city concerning the purported violations and breach of the long-term lease accord by the park owner, Cleg Enterprise. The HOA has tried for over three years to negotiate directly with the park owner to no avail. Ellen Ambergy, our HOA treasurer, and I met on January the 31st with Sylvia Daniels, the Housing and Neighborhood Service Manager, and Helen Peak, the city attorney. In that meeting, Helen, Ellen and I were informed again, our complaint could only and would only be handled by the city council. On February the 26th, I received a phone call from Ms. Daniels wanting to know if the HOA was bringing Cleg Enterprises into arbitration over the violations of the lease. I stated the position of the HOA has always been that only the city has the authority, per Exhibit F of the lease accord, to negotiate or correct park-wide violations of the lease by a park owner. At the end of that call, I requested that documentation of the call be followed up by an email. I never received it. For over two years, the homeowners in El Dorado Park have only received delays and deflection by the city of San Marcos. The city has failed to uphold and regulate the terms of the conditions of the regulatory agreement and the Declaration of Restricted Covenants and the Long-Term Lease Accord, even after providing documentation submitting to the city attorney that the park owner is constantly and continually violating and breaching the lease accord. I am here tonight to inform the city council that the Capelina Mobile Home Owners Association filed a complaint with the State Attorney General's Office against the city of San Marcos. That complaint was sent on Wednesday, May 22nd, containing copies of the regulatory agreement and long-term agreement and long-term lease accord, including Exhibits A through F and other relevant documentation. In the complaint, the HOA claims how for over two years, the HOA has tried to get the city of San Marcos to uphold the terms and enforce compliance of the regulatory agreement and long-term lease accord as defined in the documents. Without compliance of all parties, the homeowners, the park owner, and the city, there is no contract or lease. This is not what the homeowners voted for when we accepted this long-term lease, and the city never once in eight years reviewed the implementation of their prototype lease to see how it was working. The HOA also asked the city attorney general's office if the enactment of this regulatory agreement and lease accord was even legal, since this agreement and lease is unique to Eldorado Park only and was not implemented on any other mobile home park in the city, and it appears to exist nowhere else in the state of California. By allowing this unregulated long-term lease to replace the city's rent review eligibility requirement contained in San Marcos Municipal Code, Chapter 16.16, the homeowners of Eldorado Park charged, the city has infringed and violated our housing rights by not providing us due process and providing the necessary legal action to correct the violations of the long-term lease accord. The HOA also seeks for clarification from the State Attorney General's Office on whether this long-term lease will end on January 1st, 2025, per MRL Section 798.17, Subsection K, since our city attorney has not given comprehensive documentation supporting its continued use into next year and beyond. The Capalina Mobile Home Owners Association continues to request the city council to proceed in correcting all violations and breaches of the accord as we wait for direction and information from the State Attorney General's Office. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frank. Helen, could we get an update? Not, not right now, of course, because it's not an agenda, agenda item, but can we get an update?
Of course.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And that would be an update to the city council, Mr. Petrollia. Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Dee, and my apologies, I think it's Dror, but I could be wrong on that. My apologies. Followed by Jalad Markman, and then Erin Weiss.
Good evening.
Hi, sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry. So I will start with saying that, you know why I'm here. I'm here because of the demand, which I personally don't like to demand anything, I want to request. But I think that this council, like any other council around this area and around the country in general, should not be deal with anything, like, we don't deal with Ukraine, Russia, we don't deal with Assad in, in Syria, Yemen, Iraq, Afghanistan, everywhere, there is wars, there is people dead, and we have heart, too. And we have people that after, I mean, there was a ceasefire on the, on, on October 6th that was broke by Hamas on 7th. So since then, we have people, we wait three weeks to get our hostages, to get, and we don't have to say anything. The terrorists took videos. We just, last week, there was a, a video released of five or six young girls, 19 years old, that show how they were kidnapped. They were tortured, they were raped, and today, you know, it's like the Holocaust denial, we are having this right now. But I want to talk about my concerns, and my concerns is regarding these all pro-Palestinians, that I'm not sure that they are pro-Palestinians because they become pro-Hamas, because if they want to help the, the Palestinians, if they really wants to help the Palestinians, they will listen, they will learn history, they will learn geography, and not just, you know, go by TikTok and, and other social media. There is billions of Muslim, there is only 2% Jewish in, so we are, we, we lost in the social media world. But I can tell you that I know these groups 15 years, ever since I moved to the States from Israel, I know this group, BDS, and all, you know, Justice for Palestine, they started in campuses 15 years ago, founded and well-organized by outside regimes, terror organization, and we see what's happened right now. It's came to the point that our kids cannot go to school. Our kids cannot go to the library at NYU. Our kids, not only that, we have synagogue that has been burned. So I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, to think what they are getting. They are not helping the Palestinians. They are helping Hamas. They are not helping the people. Israel transfer food, water, everything. Hamas take everything and sell it in the market. Egypt, don't let all the truck come into, people, they have, most of them, never been to Israel, never been to the Middle East, never been everywhere. Since October 7th, I was in Israel twice. I have family members, people don't know. But we have people in the north and in the south, hundred thousand of people that evacuated from their home. People don't talk about that because we are very small, we don't, you, you talk loud, we are not violent. You only have to look at, at all their protests. Why they all the time have to chant? Why, take the, the chants that they do and replace the word Jew or Israeli with black, Hispanic, gay. Why? And it's crazy because you are supporting a regime, a terror organization, that against women, against gays, against everywhere. You want to protest? Go to protest there. Let's see, or in Jordan, or in Iraq. Let's see if you will come out alive from there. I have no shame. I'm proud. I'm proud.
Going to mutually respect one another and let people talk, please.
We feel like we are back in the last century, just before the Holocaust, because it's become Jew hate, Israeli hate. I mean, why would they want to decide where the money of Americans goes? I would suggest that if they want to boycott Israel, first of all, throw all your phones, all your iPads, because everything that you have today, a lot of the stuff that you touch every day, has something to do with Israel. So this is hypocrisy. This is hypocrisy. They brainwashed people, young people.
Thank you, Dee. Uh, next up is Glal Markman, followed by Erin Weiss, then it will be Jake Porin. Welcome, Jalal.
Hello. Thank you very much for having me here and giving the opportunity to talk. Um, I'm, I admit I'm emotional, and it's not my first language, and, and I'll still, I'm gonna do my best to be interesting and coherent. I'm, I'm gonna ask these beautiful people here, you don't have to listen, but don't shout when I talk, and I'll be happy to talk to all of you later, if you're interested. And I want to say that raising the Israel-Hamas war in this forum is not a genuine care for humanity. I tried conversing with them outside. I was polite, and I genuinely offered to talk. They're not looking for discussions, they're not looking for exchange of ideas, they're not looking for all the important things in, in the American democracy. They're trying to set the agenda, a sort of agenda that is wrong for a city that does not encourage a dialogue, but rather intimidation and threatening on my existence as a Jew in San Marcos. Their call for intifada is the call for the murder of me and my kids. The call from the river to the sea is a call for the murder of my family back in Israel. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up will be Erin Weiss, followed by Jake Porin, followed by Justin Gans.
Good evening. Thank you for listening. And thank you for your work, everybody. I live here. I didn't come from Oceanside or any other places. I'm not a visitor. I love, I love San Marcos a lot. I moved here. It's green, it's nice, it's safe, great education for my kids. I think actually the, the, the most dangerous thing probably about San Marcos is having allergies in, in the spring. Very green, I like it, and I appreciate, I appreciate this city council make, make that, build our community very strong. I do work, I, I work at UCR, UC Riverside. I travel every day, it's, it's, yeah, it's a long schlep, it takes me about an hour and 15 minutes, but I like to work at the university, I teach there. I've seen the hate of students since October. They transform the, the campus at UCR to look like, more like Berlin of 1936. Please don't let this city council to be another stage for hate and antisemitism and terrorism of terrorist sympathizers. They come here, I know, I, I've been at, I, I've been at the Riverside City Council when they actually decided of having this resolution on their agenda, it was a circus, it was a theater. They brought buses from Los Angeles, buses of, erds of people, in order to create intimidation, intimidate the city council to vote for the resolution of, of ceasefire. Okay? This is, these were not UC, not Riverside residents, I can tell you for sure, some of them actually admitted it. Those protesters are actually, are here to create a stage. You give them a stage, you give them the five minutes or the, the two minutes in the different city councils to spread their propaganda, propaganda against Israel and against the Jewish community. We saw in the encampment at UC, I'm telling you what I saw at UCR, only. The encampment at UCR, and you probably saw it in Columbia University, UCLA, and, and elsewhere, when they moved out, American flags were defaced, they left swastikas. This is not fighting for justice in Palestine. This is fighting for eating Jews. And they can deny it, and they can say, no, I saw it with my own eyes. I went to the center, if you've been in, actually, there's a bell tower right in the center of UCR, swastikas, 1936 Berlin, and American flag, they are against America as well. American values are not, not so, uh, they come here, use American values for free speech, they should actually come to, go to Gaza and ask them to ceasefire. You know what? I was outside, there was a very smart sixth grader, one of this baseball player, very, very nice, very, very smart boy, and said, he asked, he asked the coach, he said, what is the connection? He, he pointed at this, at these people. What is the connection to the city council? What they can, what can they do? And you know what? You know, it's, we can actually play here, you know, are you smarter than sixth graders? Half of these people don't know what actually it says on, on their own signs. A local, any local resolution, doesn't matter if this city council or another city council have no effect on foreign policy, Blinken is not gonna call Ms. Jones tomorrow and ask her, can I change the foreign policy because you decided on, on a ceasefire resolution? It's all a theater, and it's all, again, it's, it's a stage to, to spread their antisemitic views. The only thing that will affect, and the only effect that if you have a resolution here, it will create, I, I started by saying, I love San Marcos, look at this amazing picture, it will create a very tense and a negative climate in this community. Do not let it happen. Don't bring these buses from LA or from Riverside, from other places coming here, fill the room with 250 people and start spreading their propaganda. Please don't let it, don't let it happen. I thank you very much for being, for being here again, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Erin. Uh, next up is Jake Porin, followed by Justin Gans, and then Zachary Bowersock.
Thank you, City Council and Honorable Mayor. There's been a lot of talk with the last couple of speakers who came up about antisemitism. I'm an ethically Jewish student in support of the SJP here and in support of a ceasefire and a, and divestment efforts. The previous speakers who spoke put an emphasis on unwillingness to talk, and I wanted to emphasize that we are not here to debate with Zionists. We are here to demand that the city council or request that the city council represents us, the citizens of San Marcos, and many college students here. We are smarter than sixth graders. We know that you guys do have the power to do certain measures when it comes to impacting the genocide currently ongoing. We ask that you guys provide a ceasefire statement. We ask that you guys investigate your investments and disclose and divest in any investments that are invested in companies tied to the genocide or involved in the genocide in Gaza. You guys have a very important decision and a very large opportunity. There has been two cities to divest in California, Richmond and Hayward. Both of these cities are progressive and have shown the people of their city that they represent their voice and their interest. We, as the citizens of San Marcos, hope that you guys will do the same. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up will be Jo, Justin Gans, followed by Zachary Bowersock, and then it will be Tanya, ooh, Tanya, I don't know. Mustafa, my apologies. Justin, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Jones and council members. I am here on behalf of Students for Justice in Palestine at CUSM and many other members of our community to express our deep concerns regarding the ongoing humanitarian crisis in the occupied Palestinian territories. The Gaza Strip, a densely populated region under siege by the Israeli military, contains over 2 million people, 75, 70% of whom are Palestinian refugees and over half of whom are children. The International Court of Justice has ruled that Israel's ongoing war on Gaza's population amounts to plausible genocide, and more recently ordered Israel to immediately halt its military offensive in Rafah, the southernmost city in Gaza where over a million Palestinians are displaced and currently being bombed. Over 35,000 Palestinians have been killed in Gaza, with an estimated 75% of its population being internally displaced, all while desperately needed humanitarian aid supplies are being blocked by Israel. But this struggle did not begin last year on October 7th. In 1948, over half of Palestine's predominantly Arab population, around 750,000 people, were violently displaced from and dispossessed of their land, property and belongings, along with the destruction of their society and the suppression of their culture, identity, political rights and national aspirations. This event is referred to as the Nakba, which means crisis or catastrophe, a term also used to describe the ongoing persecution and displacement of Palestinians by Israel. Numerous human rights groups, including Amnesty International and Human Rights Watch, have labeled Israel's systematic denial of Palestinian human rights as an apartheid regime, as Palestinians living under Israeli military occupation have far fewer rights than Jewish Israeli citizens. Despite this dire humanitarian crisis, our president and other US politicians have continued to supply the apartheid regime of Israel with billions of dollars in military aid in violation of both international and domestic law, even while the International Court of Justice orders Israel to cease its military offensives under the Genocide Convention. Given the dereliction of our government's duty to stand for human rights, we as concerned constituents are calling on the San Marcos City Council to call for a permanent and immediate bilateral ceasefire in Gaza, as any further escalation in the fighting will only wreck more havoc on civilians and make it impossible to finally have the peace and stability that Israelis and Palestinians desperately need and deserve. According to NPR, over 100 According to NPR, over 100 US communities, including Chicago and San Francisco, have already called for a ceasefire. We are also calling for a statement that promises divestment from companies supporting any country engaged in war crimes or human rights abuses. This includes Israel and companies that have played a crucial role in supporting Palestinian human rights violations, such as Caterpillar and Hewlett Packard. Two California cities, Hayward and Richmond, have already initiated divestment efforts, so this is fully within the realm of San Marcos' possibilities. Finally, we want the city to acknowledge the systems of oppression and violence in the US that are intimately linked to the US-backed occupation of Palestine by passing a comprehensive resolution that restricts how our city can invest in companies involved in arms manufacturing, border surveillance, mass incarceration, and detention. We would like to see these issues brought onto the agenda for the next city council meeting for further discussion. And we will continue to make our voices heard until our city lives up to its values by taking an affirmative stance on this human rights struggle. Together, our city can save lives in Gaza and free Palestine from ethnic cleansing, occupation, and apartheid. Thank you for your time and attention to this issue.
Next up will be Zachary Bowersock, followed by Tanya Mustafa, then it will be Leitha Shamron. Welcome, Zachary.
Thank you. So I'm coming to you today as someone who's spent a not insignificant part of his life in San Marcos. I went to high school here. I went to college here. I even lived here for three to four years. I helped build the hospital we have here as a part of IBW Local 569. I've made friends and have many relationships here. Now, given how much I've invested in this community, I've had a great deal of interest in it not seeing thrown into the dustbin of history. To see San Marcos start setting a trend of San Diego cities who acknowledge the genocide of Palestinians and call for immediate ceasefire in occupied Palestine and divestment from any companies engaged in crimes against humanity, including those in Israel. The death toll for Israel's current campaign is likely over 100,000. The only reason it's hard to know is because every hospital and entity responsible for keeping count has been bombed and destroyed. I've met and know some of you up here, and I know some of you generally care about the average person, especially about children. So please extend that care to the people of the world and to stop the slaughter of innocent men, women, and children on the dime of everyone in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Zachary. Next up is Tanya Mustafa, followed by Leitha Shamron, which is our last speaker. Zachary? Thank you. Tanya? Welcome.
Everyone, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but just after listening to a few people here, few speakers that they're minimizing the role of these students and those people and just saying that they're ignorant, they have no relationship to what's happening, and that they don't know why they're here, or they don't have connection. Some of them have connections, some of them don't. And those who don't, don't need to have a connection because you don't need to have a relative to feel with other people who who have been in this situation at a maybe lesser extent for over 100 years, starting from 1889. This is not new. This is not October 7th, and it's not even 1948. I'm a mother. I'm a grandmother, and I'm an educator. And I'm Lebanese, and my country was occupied for 15 years by Israel, so so this topic is near and dear to me. And I've lived a lot, and I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot of things happening in my country, but also in Palestine. I watch TV since, you know, since I was young, and I saw, and I saw people, people on the street just demonstrating. And I saw how they were cracking their bones, and it's, I'm an educator, okay? So what I'm saying, you can see it, you can read it in books. They were cracking people's arms, and I was little, and I thought, if I bumped my hand, my hand, it hurts me. I wonder how, what these people feel, what this 90-year-old man feels when they break his arm and break his leg, as it was a policy of the government of Israel to do that. It's documented, and you can read it, and I'm very happy to send you a list of books by very well-known scholars and credible scholars that you can read for yourself. I don't need to go over history with everyone. I just want to echo what you hear all the time, divestment. And why are we divesting? Some, one person said, why do you have to listen to people who are telling us to divest? Well, because it's our money. It's not your, it's not, it's not the government's money. It is our, it's all of our money. I don't want my tax money, and most of you don't want your tax money, to go anywhere. It's, we're not, not only Israel, any, any country that supports the killing of innocent people is not okay. That's why. That's, it's just simple. It's just very simple. So that's it, supporting, please, and issuing a statement. You know, we're just humans. We're mothers, we're fathers, we're fathers, brothers, sisters. These people who are burned every day and killed and bombed and, and being decapitated and, I forgot the word. They don't have limbs anymore because they couldn't help them? So you're gonna see a lot of kids and people that don't have limbs because they couldn't have been treated. They, they can't be treated. You see kids without parents, parents without kids, without grandparents, without, without. And what are we creating? What is, so I know it's symbolic, but what is not symbolic is divestment. This is what's not symbolic, and this is what we would like to ask of you. Thank you so much for listening.
Whoops. Thank you, Tanya. Next up is Leitha Shamron. Shamron. Sorry. Welcome, Leitha.
Hello. My name is Leitha Shamsan, and Shamsan, actually. You know, I'm just so used to the trauma of saying my real last name in this country. Yeah, so I am new here to San Marcos. I, you know, I love San Marcos as well. I just graduated from Cal State San Marcos in biotech, got my Bachelor of Science. I'm really grateful for the school. I'm originally from Yemen, and, you know, I'm just really devastated on what's happening in Palestine for the last 77 years. Growing up as an Arab-American, it was just, you know, as a kid, it was just like really hard, like every morning with my parents, you know, just I'd be getting ready for school, and my parents would be eating breakfast, and then the world news, we're just like watching it, and we just see what's going on in Iraq, Lebanon, in the early 2000s. You know, I'm born in 1999, so this is like when I was a kid, like in the early 2000s, when President Bush was president. It was just so traumatizing, coming home from school, seeing the news again, and seeing Lebanon buildings getting blown up, and Iraq, and then we thought Barack Obama was gonna solve the problems, but he didn't. Instead, he wants to go blow up my country. You know, it's just really hard seeing my, my territory, like the Middle East, just not growing and developing like us Americans. You know, it's just seeing the pictures every single day, like the people, you know, being massacred and beheaded, and the, you know, just people not having a home. You know, it's just looking back at history, you know, it's just so unfair, like we had Jewish people, we have, you know, Muslim people, we have Christian people. They're all living in the Middle East. Like, they can live there with us. You know, there's so many other countries in the Middle East where like we have so much like people from different countries, but we're not killing them. Like, we could all live together, but we don't have to like ethnic cleanse a whole entire country and start killing them. Like, the Jewish people are always there, but it's Zionism, and we're standing against Zionism. So, you know, just, this is just very unfair to me, growing up. You know, I just would have dreams as well, you know, just seeing all this stuff on the news. Like, I wouldn't even get it in my dreams. Like, I remember as a kid, I had a dream. I was in the Iraq War. I mean, I'm not Iraqi, but I remember just seeing the news, like the news every single day. It would just get into my dreams at night. Like, I remember, like, I was hiding in a clothing rack at a, like, at a store, like, in the city, and like the troops started coming and shooting. My dad was at the register, and I'm just like sitting quiet, you know, it just, I had a dream I was in Palestine. I pretended to be like the people on the other side because I get a lot of people telling me I look like I'm Jewish. You know, it's just, I can't imagine for the people who are there, like, just me seeing this in my dreams, I can't imagine for those people, like, being bombed in tents, and like people just not being able to sleep, not know when their next meal is. You know, I, I, you know, I always will stand up for my Arab brothers and sisters as well as other people in the Middle East. You know, I hope we can all stand up as one and get peace once and for all. I'm here today to speak up for the people right now in Palestine, Syria, Lebanon, Iraq, Yemen. So, you know, I hope, you know, this, today, you know, this conversation will bring a resolution. I know you guys have a bigger power than most of us that are sitting here today, and I hope you guys could be the word. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, Leitha. Okay, and it's Shamsan. Okay, all right. Sorry about that the first time. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, that would be reports. And the first one is Sandag. So essentially, we had a few things on the agenda. One of the most notable would be the removal of the 125, well, converting it from a toll road, which it was actually built as a toll road, a private toll road, and what some of the board members are wanting, which I would be in favor of if, under certain circumstances, is they want to remove that from being a toll road, and they want us to pay that off early. So if we were to pay that off in July of 2025, it would actually be at a break-even point so that we could actually get it prepared so that Caltrans could take it over. I would be in favor of it in 2035, but really not before that because we have many projects that are transnet projects that were actually not delivered yet, even on just the environmental. And how that works is it's environmental design, and then the construction happens after that. So I would not be in favor of that actually taking money that was supposed to be used for other road projects and moving the 125 and paying that off early until those other projects are actually at least delivered, and so that's, that would be a problem. The other thing, there was discussion of the bylaws that some of the board members wanted to move forward in changing the bylaws. I had a, oh, one other thing I did want to say about the 125 is Supervisor Anderson out in East County was talking about the 67, and I agreed with him, and that is that he wanted, he wanted everyone to remember that the 67 cannot actually be evacuated, the people from like Ramona and Julian and all of that. And so I actually agreed with him, and I, I think that safety equity is also important in whether we would actually move forward with pushing projects forward before they would, they, they should be done because they were not voted on by San Diego County residents. So anyway, back to the bylaws. So the bylaws, there were some changes that were proposed. The board did not ultimately vote for that. One of the things that I thought that would be helpful for the board was that we would have some sort of training to be able to bring some mutual respect back to the board, the board leadership, which would be Chair Vargas, the Vice Chair, which is Sean Hilo Rivera, and then the second Vice Chair, which is Lisa Hebner, with the public, when interacting with the public, because it's gotten to a point where there's a lot of mutual disrespect, and I don't think it's good for anybody involved. I think it's good to have civil, civil discussion and listen to the community members that take the time to come to the meetings, which I think is very important, so I think everyone should have their voice heard. Anyway, so there was discussion about that that ultimately did not pass, but I will continue fighting for civil discussion with the members of the community and then also the board leadership. Did I leave anything out, council member? Okay. So that would be my report on Sandag, and then I guess the next item would be item number 11, which, uh-oh. I lost that page. Oh, here we go. Sorry. League of California Cities. I always want to have North County Transit second, but I know that it's not. League of California Cities, Councilmember Masgrove.
We meet next month.
Next month, all of that, and we didn't even meet. Okay. North County Transit District Deputy Mayor, something exciting is happening at North County Transit coming up here.
Yes, I spoke about it previously. I don't have any notes on it, but
Do we have that, sorry, real quick, do we have it up on our website yet, or at least a link to it about the new shuttle program?
I'm not sure, Mayor. I'm gonna have to check on that for you.
Well, if we don't, can we request that we get that up?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, sorry. Take it away, Deputy Mayor.
So what the mayor's talking about is on June 11th, we will be launching what's called NCTD Plus, which is an on-demand shuttle service within a particular zone within San Marcos. So that's coming. They've been doing a lot of positive PR on it, and so I think we all get to ride the bus, or the van. And we won't have to call for it.
Yes, and the next day at, when we're over at the farmer's market, which by the farmer's market, if you haven't been there, that's on Tuesdays, every Tuesday from 3 until 6, I believe. I don't think the summer hours have started yet. It does go till 7 at some point in time. I'm not sure when that is. But on July, is it July 12th?
11th, I believe.
Oh, no, the day that it's going to be unveiled at the, wait, I don't know.
I don't have those details with me.
June, June, sorry, not July. June, sorry. We're gonna look up the date for everyone so that we can actually be accurate on that, sorry. I see, Michelle.
You are correct. It is June 11th at 3 PM.
At the, I'm sorry, that's at the farmer's market?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. For some reason, I thought that was a 12th. My apologies. So everyone can come check it out, and there is an app for that, yes?
There's an app.
There's an app, okay. All right, sorry.
Yeah, I shouldn't say call. It's an app. So three items to highlight from our meeting. We received a report on the Pronto fare system. They've been working on enhancements on that. That's joint with Metropolitan Transit System. We will have an implementation of open-loop payments, which will allow the riders to use credit cards and mobile wallet apps at platforms and on buses. And the other enhancement is customers will be able to submit online applications for discounted fares. They will not have to go somewhere to do that. The other, second item, and a major one, is our operating budget for this coming year. It's 188 million, and it is balanced, but there are some, just like many cities in the county, there are headwinds coming our way, so hopefully, we'll be looking at that along the way and, and hopefully be able to deal with that proactively instead of reactively. The other thing is we are redeveloping two transit, Sprinter transit stations. Both of them are in the city of Oceanside, where we own, obviously, the station at Sprinter. One, they are both gonna be 100% affordable. And one will be at Melrose Station with about 420 units, and the other one will be at Rancho Del Oro with about 98 units. And along with the developers constructing those, there will be many enhancements to our transit needs at those stations. We, what we did is approve the contract, the negotiation so that the staff can negotiate with the developers to come up with the final product. When that happens, which takes a couple of years, then the final will be voted on by the board at that time, so lots of, there was a lot of positive comments about it being 100% affordable. My comments were, it's not as much money to NCTD as I thought it should be, so, but it's a negotiation, so we'll see what happens.
I have two questions on that. So if it is 100% affordable, does that mean that, who gets the credit for that? Does it go to the city then?
It'll go to the cities.
To the cities arena?
Yes.
Okay, and then, I guess I have three actually. How are they, how are they going to, are they getting like redevelopment funds or tax credits or something like that to help build it?
That's
Okay, don't, you're not, okay.
No.
You haven't, okay, no decision on that? Haven't, okay, no decision on that?
It's all negotiation at this point.
And then they also have the property here in San Marcos, have they considered that as one of the things that they would actually build?
I think that would be down the road.
Okay.
You know, they're working on Oceanside Transit Center, Carlsbad Village, Point Setia, Escondido, I think there might be...
Because for us, you know, it's right next to Palomar College, it seems to me, where they own that land, seems to me that would be a very good location for them to move forward on something, and then, you know, help us with our arena numbers too. Anyway, I, I only brought, I brought this up back when I was still on the board, which was, I left the board in 2019, I think it was, so, but I had brought it up back then, so maybe just say, hey, if they, if they're interested.
There's a lot to review before they get to that point.
Yeah, okay.
So they're looking at all of them to see what's possible.
Great, okay, thank you. Moving on to North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor, we did meet last week on May 22nd, and really, we had two highlights in that meeting, so one of them, if the council remembers, the city of Escondido, the city council unanimously approved last year, October 11th was the big day, 2023, when they, the council agreed to join the Joint Powers Authority, and it finally came to fruition this year, so we did get a report, and it really was, was glowing, so the official start date was April 29th, 2024, and what we were told is that it's, it's been a huge success, nobody's looking back, and so I'm sure we'll be hearing a lot more details, but so far, so good. And we did also approve our budget for the next coming year, so that's for fiscal year 2024 to 2025, and the total operating budget is 7,123,566, and the adopted budget for this year is 6,423,878. So it looks good.
And how much is our calls for service?
Let me see if I have that in front of me in the update.
And are they going to be finding a new home yet? We've only been talking about this, just so you know, when I first took...
The conversation continues.
This is back, let me think, what was my first year in office, 2007, we've, we've been talking about it since 2007.
The conver, that, it's still ongoing, but we haven't received an update this year, so we may see that at our next, at our next meeting. Let me see if I can find the, the call per...
That's okay, you can get, you get that to us, it's all right, council member, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
But we can continue.
Yeah.
I just have one comment back to North County Transit, because there's a number of new faces in the room, we are leasing the land to the developers, it's not, we're not the builder, we're not the developer, we're leasing land, and so I just wanted to be clear on that, so people don't think we're developers.
Oh, yeah, no, just like the city, we actually don't develop either, it's, it's all private development, okay, and it's okay, council member, don't, don't stress yourself out, you can get it to us, it's no big deal, we don't, you don't have to keep looking for that. Anyway, business visits, BOS Golf, were there any other business visits besides that? I don't know.
We meet on Thursday for clean energy, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
We meet Thursday for clean energy.
I know that, oh, sorry, I forgot to mention it, but I knew that you hadn't met yet, sorry, my apologies. Okay, business visits, BOS Golf, very interesting, why don't you start, council member?
So, this is actually a recurring visit, we were at BOS 2, 2 and 1/2 years ago, it's Black Oxide Services, they're on Linda Vista Drive, they...
Wait, who went last time, because I didn't go last time.
I think Councilmember Nunez and I, yeah.
Oh, okay, Councilmember Nunez.
So they specifically, they take metal products, and instead of coating, they impregnate the metal with either a matte, a semi-gloss or a gloss finish, and while it is black primarily, they will do different colors. And one of their subsidiary operations, which was kind of interesting, because it's the same building, different door, we walked in, same faces, walked from one end of the building to the other, they do, they'll do service for anyone that has a golf club, just bring your, I guess they'll take the shaft off the head, but they'll take the head, and they will custom work it for you, they'll refinish it for you, they'll clean it up if it's marred, or if you want a custom build, they take care of that too, they do a lot of specific work there. It's one of three remaining machine shops left in San Marcos, and the other two are literally within a stone's throw of this operation.
And what was the number of how many they had originally in the city? I want to say it was like in the teens.
It was, and they were pretty well dispersed around the central part of town, but they've just all kind of gone away.
Maybe like 18.
A lot of them are family-owned businesses that just left.
Yep, yep, and this is a family-owned business.
And this is a family-owned business, so currently, August and Monica, is it Slavnik? Slivnik, they run the operation, they do have a business manager, and her name escapes me right now, I have her business card at home, but just the nicest people, you can walk right in there, we got a tour of the specific area where they're working, they do work for the military, for law enforcement, for anyone, any business, they'll do a one-off, if you walked in there and said, "I, I have a product, I would like to have it cleaned up, refinished, and this is how I'd want it to look," they're happy to take care of it for you, they'll give you a time estimate, and they do not put preferences, so if Callaway comes in and says, "We have 1,000 heads, we want cleaned up and done all this," but Lieutenant Spock came in with one of his favorite knives, and he was ahead of them, he would come ahead of them, so it's first come, first served, they do great work, it was fantastic to see. We didn't see any of the finished work, but we saw a lot of the raw product. They have done work for Ray Cook, Tiger Woods, Callaway, I believe, was it Callaway?
Yeah, that's one of their first, first customers.
Right, Taylor Made, Titleist, I think in their heyday, they had over 100 employees, fewer now, but it's really kind of a, an issue where machinists, specialists are not, not necessarily a dying breed, but they're, to run effectively a mom-and-pop operation gets very expensive, they do a fantastic job of keeping their area clean, they use a lot of water there, and they had to have an 85% recycling rate on their water that they use for, for cooling when they're running the machines, it's, and you walk in there, and it's a machine shop, there's no doubt, but very easy to, to walk around, just the nicest people that are absolutely dedicated to what they're doing.
That was, that was the whole visit, you didn't even let me say anything, council member.
I did my best.
Actually, I thought, I thought it was very interesting, because in the back, they had this machine, well, they actually had two very old-school machines, one of them, I just put whatever metal it is, it'll tell you the thickness, the weight, and everything, just stick it right in there, and then he had this one, I kid you not, it looked sort of like an X-ray machine, it was very old-school, you just put the metal object that you want to replicate in it, and it tells you to the dot exactly how, what the measurements are and everything, and he said that the new ones do exactly the same thing, what were you gonna say?
With the ruby at the end?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was really very interesting, he put up like a little pencil lead, and it tells you exactly the measurements of it, and it's like, and, and then he said, "Oh, we had these," so they do actually, like, darts and things like that, and they had this, like, for, I'm sorry, I guess darts wouldn't be the right thing.
The broadheads.
So, yeah, the, for the bow and arrow, so it's like parts of the actual arrow, and he said he'd been working on them, they do a lot of custom metalwork, which Ed had mentioned, but he had been working on these particular pieces of metal for over a year, because they're so intricate that you, they have to keep testing and testing and get them just right, it was, it was fascinating. And the coolest thing was, they're super excited about it, it was a family, it was started by, I think it was their father, right?
Their father, yes.
Yeah, their father, and so they said, "Oh, yeah, our parents brought us in because, you know, it was like, it was great labor because they didn't have to pay us, and we, we really grew up here," and so they learned from their dad, who was, you know, the, the person that had started the company, so, you know, August and, what's her name again?
Monica.
Monica, I want to say Marlene.
His sister.
Monica, yeah, they're brother and sister, and they, they just get along really well, which is kind of unusual, being that they work together also, but anyway, it was a fascinating business, and I would encourage anyone in the city, we have a lot of very cool businesses that you don't even know about, so if you're looking for something, chances are, I bet you there's an actual business in our city that does it. So, anyway, moving on, oh, San Marcos Creek District, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a question, council member? Oh, you found it, yes.
I want to report, our chief helped me out, and, or charged for service for fiscal year 24, 25 is 775,866, charge for the service.
Yes, so each, so how many is, how much is that per call, broken down by call? You don't have to look right now, but it would be, it would be divided by, I guess, how many calls we have. So, our chief probably knows this off the top of...
I know he does.
Because they talk about, he's, I think he's on the Finance Committee, which is why he would know, he literally, like, I could say, I ask a question, and he's like, "Oh, bloop, bloop," he just knows it all, so, it's okay, you guys could get it to me later, I was just curious.
So, I am looking at the 2023 incidences, and it's 10,000...
Yeah, that sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah, 10,306 is what I'm showing for, for 2023.
Right, okay.
So one of the nice things about that is the overlay, we answer calls in Escondido, they come into San Marcos, Vista comes into San Marcos, we go into Carlsbad, so having them on our same system makes it, I think, a lot more efficient.
Seamless.
To get the calls handled as quickly as possible.
Definitely, I'm glad they came on board, I think it definitely will streamline the services. Oh, see, he's coming down, the chief is coming down, he knows, he knows the number right off the top of his head all day.
Per call anymore, recharge by station personnel, and there's another layer that charges percentage of usage and time and energy that Northcom places with each agency, which came from a recommendation by a third-party contractor that came in to, to look at our billing cycles.
I actually had forgot, so thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
That little detail. All right, moving on to our favorite subject, the Creek District project.
Yes, we have a brief update tonight, landscaping is ongoing, with finishing touches being done on lighting, playground, fencing, and signage, so we really are at the finishing touch phase of this momentous project.
It's the icing on the cake, but what happened last week?
The traffic lights are up and running and are working effectively.
Yes, no more flashing lights, yes, it's, it's, it's amazing, we're very excited about it, okay, any other commentary from the council? Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned.